I'd like to call this meeting forward with the special budget meeting in Marquette City Commission, Monday, August 20th. Please everyone please drive and join.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Combenzi. Commissioner Campana.
Here.
Commissioner Coin.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse.
Here.
Mayor Neamy.
Here.
Have we heard anything from Commissioner Combenzi, City Manager?
No, sir.
She may just be running a little late, then. I guess in the event she doesn't get here, should we? Commissioner Coin?
I move we excuse Commissioner Combenzi.
Okay. Is there support? Commissioner Campana?
Yes.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Coin, second by Commissioner Campana, to excuse the absence of Commissioner Combenzi if she does not make it here. All in favor of the motion, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed the motion, say no. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, the next item is note of agenda changes. One minor rearrangement. Ms. Christensen from the library had a previous appointment, then might be running a little late, so we'll move her down to whatever we'll take. We'll start with the DDA and take the library, I guess, as she arrives or fit her in as it occurs. So is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you. Oh, yes, we have another agenda change, I'm sorry. We have, the change is, from the previous agenda is to item, we addition of item six, is that correct? Scheduling a public hearing for December 8, 2014, to a review of the 2014-15 budget. So would that be an acceptable change, Commissioner Ryan?
Yes, it is.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
What we wanted to do was to take that item off of today's agenda because-
Oh, I'm sorry.
At the last meeting, the public hearing was set for August 25th.
Okay.
So it's already been set.
I guess I should read my instruction carefully.
And that wasn't part of my motion, too.
Yes, thank you. We are flexible. Is there a second to our flexible motion? Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse.
The second motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse, to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. The motion passes unanimously. I have no announcements. Public comment, comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comments. Anyone desiring to address the commission. We have a set of lights up here that when a person starts addressing the commission, we activate. It'll be, it'll be green for the first two minutes. At one minute, it'll turn solid yellow, and at 30 seconds, it'll start flashing yellow. And when time has expired, it'll be red, and your time will be up. Anyone wishing to address the commission? Seen none? We'll proceed with the consent agenda. Commissioners, what is your pleasure with consent agenda? Commissioner Coin?
I move we approve the consent agenda. Adopted.
Commissioner Ryan?
Second the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Coin, seconded by Commissioner Ryan, to approve the consent agenda. It's approval of minutes, the August 15th special meeting, budget meeting, that's for both sets of minutes, the nested minutes as well as the overall minutes. Thank you. All in favor of the motion, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed the motion, say no. The motion passes unanimously. Under new business, we'll now proceed with the Downtown Development Authority. Do you have some introductory remarks, City Manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I'd like to express my appreciation to Director Lang for coming here this morning and sharing the good work of the DDA. Please, Monica, come on forward. I have the opportunity to sit on this board. It's one of the few by statute that the city manager actually gets to participate in. And so it's actually kind of a pleasure for me because I got to go in and sit in the shoes that the commission normally does while somebody else is actually doing all the work. And in this particular case, it's Monica and her very capable staff. We've received numerous, numerous laudatory comments in the media, from the residents, from the public, expressing their great satisfaction and the welcoming atmosphere that the downtown of Marquette always imposes upon people's view. And the wonderful time that they have when they visit, and in a large part, that's due to the efforts of the DDA, not just in terms of what they do to maintain property values and keep that downtown vibrant, but the activities, the program, and all of the other wonderful things that go on down there. So it's my pleasure to introduce Monica this morning, thank her hard work, and hopefully give you a sense of what she's proposing to even add to that next year.
Well, thank you for those kind words. And I would like to introduce, actually in the audience, is our Board Treasurer, Karen Hendricks, who sits on the DDA Board and serves as treasurer. And she, this is her first time she's been at a budget presentation. Believe it or not, this is my 17th, so I think I'm getting old hand at this. And Gary asked me to inform you that the DDA's budget is in the Budget Book on page 203. And we do a separate submittal, I'm not sure why, we just always have. And so, is the whole thing in there or just the figures? Okay. So I'll just kind of flip through real quick. I don't think I need to go through the introduction unless you want me to, kind of explain in the DDA. I was just here several weeks ago and did our annual presentation, so I think I will skip kind of right to page three, which would that be then, now, 200 what? This can be confusing. 206. And talk just a little bit about the goals that have been, okay. Talk a little bit about the goals that, it's 207. And talk about some of the goals and initiatives for 2015 that the DDA Board has set. And some of those have been integrated into the city's strategic plan for the next two years that the City Commission just went through. And the first is to implement the changes in the parking system that came through the recommendations from the parking study that we had done two years ago. And as part of that, it will be to look at the parking management plan, to purchase parking meters and equipment in the areas that were recommended, and that'll be phased in. So the 100, 200, and 300 blocks of West Washington Street were the recommendations. The consultant found that at those, actually, the 100 and 200 block had almost 100 percent, over 100 percent occupancy. And prime would be about 80 percent, so you want that turnover of cars, so that customers are in those convenient spaces. To also then develop and implement policies to process and make sure that the parking system is self-sustaining. I've been before, with you before, talking about that the DDA TIF funds actually supplement the costs of parking. The DDA Board does see that as part of economic, their economic development, their charge because parking's so important to the economy of the downtown area. And then to explore opportunities for private partnerships for the development of public parking, working with some potential property owners, some developers, where we can partner to do public-private partnerships to provide parking, whether it be maybe leasing parking from a private parking owner, so that that can be used for public parking. So there's some ideas there that we need to look at. And there's going to be a parking committee, subcommittee, ad hoc committee put together probably in January, February, to really start to work hard on this. And then just some initiatives to continue to improve the aesthetics and the biking, the pedestrian friendliness of downtown. Working on branding Third Street, the historic district, the West End. That's been a big issue to try to pull all those areas together as we have expanded to Third Street. Each of those areas kind of has their own personality, but also to try to pull that into a larger district feel. To better engage and support the businesses, to increase business training. We have about 400 businesses in the downtown district, and we do a monthly promotions meeting to pull the businesses in. And if we get 12 businesses to participate, that's a lot. So we really need to work, I think, on better engagement. And then to explore and pursue grant opportunities, and I'll talk about that in just a little bit, some of the grants that we're working on right now. Work with property owners to facilitate property improvement grants, to leverage private funds. You know, one of our main goals is to increase property values, and that's done by, obviously, investment, and private investment. And then the Delft Theater Improvement Project, I've been before you before talking about that. Work with city administration to analyze, modify, develop policies and regulations that affect downtown. I know one of them right now that the commission is interested in, is looking at the food truck issue, and how that'll be implemented. And higher maintenance on public properties, especially snow management. Every winter, we hear from the properties and businesses, property owners, formal recognition of building owners who make substantial improvements, continue to support and grow our current events, support the farmers market, cultivate a positive attitude about downtown, and that's done several different ways, and then expand the promotion of downtown and the city. So that's what we're looking at for 2015. And then on page 208, you'll see a schedule of fees that we're putting out for approval as part of the budget. We charge employees parking permits $25 a month. And then we have 24-hour reserve spaces in the lower level of the Bluff Street ramp, that's a covered 24-hour, and they're 60 a month. And then we charge 30 a month for residents, 24 hours. And parking meters, 50 cents an hour. Commons rental is $50 an hour for private, 35 an hour for nonprofit organizations. And then we also have a liquor permit if the residents, or the users of the commons apply for a liquor permit. It's another $25 to cover liability.
Ms. Lang? Are these change, are any of these changes?
No.
These are all just-
So am I good?
Existing-
Yep, can I just skip past then? Is that what you want?
Sure, I just, I guess if there was differences, we'd probably be interested in that.
Nope, there really isn't. Nope, they're all the same. So skip through. I'll just keep squinting with me. Okay, and then on page what? Page 209 then is just a prior year comparison, budget summary, 2015 back through 2010. So that's just for your information and review. And then on page 210 is just two graphs that kind of show the breakdowns of where we get our revenue and where we spend our money. As you can see, the TIF is the largest part of our revenue source, 70 percent of our funds come from our TIF revenue, and 14 percent from parking, and then other revenues throughout. And then breakdown maintenance and parking is our largest, at 35 percent, and then capital outlay at 33 percent. All right, and then budget detail is page, that's all right, page 211 for the current year. And I have also included on page 213 would be a by-fund breakdown. I don't know if you prefer me to go by fund or just a budget summary. Just budget summary? Yeah. All righty, for revenues, I'm just going to hit the, kind of the large items and then the total. So we're back on page 211. And, is it 211?
211.
Yeah, 211. Okay, for revenues, we're anticipating TIF revenues of $767,000. That is, included in that is $21,000 that we applied for the personal property tax exemption. The state is replacing our losses from TIF for personal property tax exemptions that were applied for. And we actually had 88 property owners downtown and 30 properties on Third Street that applied for that exemption. And then, so our two-mill tax, then, we're looking at around $42,000. And that's approximately $17,000 comes from Third Street, and then the balance from downtown properties. Parking rent revenues, that's pretty stable. We don't, really don't have much, we're pretty much of a flat budget, $91,240. Then other rent revenue, which would be our commons rent is, or commons rent would be around $10,000. Meter revenues, we're projecting at $62,000 for next year. If we get the new meters in, we should see that, obviously see that revenue increase. It'll probably be about a half year's worth next year by the time we get the meters installed. And then just other miscellaneous revenues, we do have now, we have really aggressively, or seeking sponsorships and participation fees for events, just to help offset some of those costs. Farmers market fees, those are registration fees for participation in the farmers market, and that's $8,000. And then flow-through farmers market funds, that's $56,000, and that'll wash back out under the expenditures. And that is money that we take in for the farmers and then once a month replace, and that's for supplemental food programs and for credit card use. And then under expenditures, as we drop, well, we probably should give you a total. So we're looking at a total of just a little bit over $1 million. $1,937.51 for total revenue coming in for 2014 that's anticipated. And then under expenditures, we're looking at personnel costs of $402,404. That figure has gone up over the last several years as the DDA Board has added staff, as we've taken on more and more responsibilities, more properties on Third Street. We've really, really have increased, obviously, the events that we do and the promotions that we do. So as we've expanded what we do, they felt the need to expand staff as well. As a matter of fact, I am actually interviewing, soon as I leave here, we're going to start to interview for promotions and events coordinator. Unfortunately, we have not had a lot with that position. This is our third round. It's only been two years since that position's been implemented, but we're having a hard time keeping somebody in there. So we are going to be working on that. And also, working toward providing health care coverage for employees that need it. We currently have not had health care coverage in the DDA, and the Board feels that that's really important to attract and to sustain good employees. So we'll also be working toward that. And then there's just, I'm just going to kind of skip down through. We've got office administrative costs of $21,400, communication expense of $8,162. That includes internet office, phones, cell phones, elevator, emergency phones, the internet access we need for, we have the cameras that are in the commons and in the Bluff Street ramp. So there's a variety of different items in there. And then utilities of $33,020. That includes all the parking lots, the lighting, the water, the sewage, stormwater. And farmers market flow-through, that's, again, that's just an in and out. Farmers market operating and marketing, $7,500. And then promotion and development budget is $65,000. And you'll see later in the budget manual, there is a detailed breakdown of that. And then just some other professional services, credit card fees, staff development, travel, professional miscellaneous services, website, that kind of thing. And so that's $59,160. And then some contractual, snow removal, $45,000. Elevator maintenance of just right under $6,000, that's for the two elevators in the parking structure and the Main Street Tower. And that brings us down to professional and contractual, $117,335. And then the next subcategory actually is maintenance and repair, and that's $65,220. And some insurance, miscellaneous insurances, which brings us to operating expenses of $7,811,741. And then capital outlay of $413,900. And I'd like to go into detail a little bit with that with you. So with bond, we have a bond, outstanding bond. Principal interest on that is $144,378, and that was a 15-year bond taken out in 2011. And total expenditures of $1,341,900. Shows a deficit balance of $246,268, but that is actually bond funds from 2011 that we're carrying forward for a project. So it's pretty much a break-even budget. So we're looking at actually carrying over funding of $867,315 as a starting balance for 2016.
The bond was for repair of the parking ramp, wasn't it?
It was, yeah, it was the parking, it was a $1.5 million bond, so it was part of the parking ramp. And then there were some other improvement projects in that, and one of them was the East Washington Street project, which we worked with the city on, I think that was like $46,000. And then also, the 200 block of West Washington Street was also included in that, and we are, we're going to delay that for another year. I'm going to talk to you about that. So there were some other projects. The parking ramp was $1.1 million.
Big part.
And then there was another $400,000 for miscellaneous site improvement projects.
What are the land improvements for $320,000?
Okay, that's what, yep. Okay, we're going to talk about looking at the Third Street green space, which we've budgeted $50,000 for. If you look on page 218, there's actually a detailed breakdown.
Okay.
Some crosswalks and pedestrian improvements, $16,000. Curb replacement on Third Street, $22,500. And what that is, is when we had the parking consultant in, and also the Third Street plan is curbing where parking, on-street parking could be added, so that would be curbing replacement to enable us to add that on-street parking. So there's obsolete curb cuts, basically, on Third Street that need to be filled in and adjusted. And I have met with some of the property owners, actually on Third, and talked to them about their properties, and if there's alleys or driveways that they're not using, give us being able to fill those in, and most of them are open to that. So that project, would like to do that next year, for sure.
That would be curbing and you'd probably have to replace the sidewalk where drives?
I don't think so, only in one spot. Actually, it would be where the blue link is. That one would have to be replaced because what we would do with that is we would completely close in his Third Street access and help him open up his access from the side street.
It's a nice, that's a nice access where you go around Martin Park, if you need to turn around. My barber's not there anymore.
Okay. So those, so that would be Third Street. And then curb replacement for the 200 block of West Washington. And we did put that out for bids this year, and it came in $100,000 over the budget and over the engineer's estimate. So we have decided to try to rebid that in February rather than later in the year to see if we can get a price that's more in line with what it should be. And that, that block, the curbing is really bad, it's disintegrating, and I think it actually causes a safety issue. So we're going to be looking at doing that, that major project. And then just some parking lot repairs, there's always some repairs that need to be done in the parking lots. So we have $22,000 budgeted for that. And then, as you can see, we've committed $10,000 to this Delft project. And then some equipment and furnishings, including $52,000 for the parking meters.
What's the current status of the Delft project? I'm waiting for the grant, I assume.
Well, actually, we're waiting for the property owner right now. There's been some changes, so we're ready to go. The state has, actually called me yesterday, they're hyped, they're ready to move forward on this. And I know the property owner's ready to move forward, but there's some legal things that have to be taken care of before we could submit the final. So I'll probably be back to you guys on that.
Okay.
So that brings our capital outlay to $413,900.
Questions? Commissioner Coin?
I have a question. When Third Street became part of the DDA, is that's a correct statement?
Yes.
What effect did that have on your revenues?
Well, about $17,000, because that's the two-mill tax that we get from Third Street is about $17,000. So that was an increase of about $17,000.
Okay. You mentioned that there were 80-some people who applied for exceptions. Could you explain how they qualify, what qualifies you for an exemption?
Well, that was, I threw the assessor's office, actually, but that's the new personal property tax legislation, and I believe it's 40,000 of taxable property. So any small business with 40,000 or less of taxable personal property could file a form of exemption from paying the personal property tax.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Do you know the financial repercussions for your revenue with that?
I do. Well, $21,000 was for TIF, the TIF portion of that, which we submitted for reimbursement to the state for that. And then the other portion is about, right around $7,000.
$7,000, is that less or?
Yes, less.
That's for the 40,000?
That would be for the two-mill tax, right? Which isn't really two-mill because of the headlight, it's like 1.867 or something.
You had mentioned the low participation. Any thoughts about that? What, people just want to do their business and move along, or?
I think, I think that, and I, you know, when things are going pretty good, people don't tend to show up, but when things get a little rough, then we'll get, I think you get participation. So, you know, more than likely, when we start to talk about putting meters in, we'll start to get participation.
You know, because, you know, as the manager said, and I've said before, and others have said, you know, I think we're all proud of what goes on downtown and see just good things happening, and as I've said, it's become part of our identity. And so I hope the people down there feel the same pride, you know, that-
Oh, I think they do. I just, you know, I guess they're, you know, they're busy running their businesses, and if they don't see a need, if they like what they're seeing, they don't see a need to change things.
I've seen that happen many times in many places, you know, as you said. If things are going all right, it's fine. If you bring up some issue that becomes a little controversial, then everybody comes out of the woodwork.
Yeah, and you know, we've really, the DDA's really changed a lot of their focus, too, with these events and promotions. They used, there used to be the business organization that used to do a lot of that.
Right.
And we have really taken it over, I think, grown it and added some events. I think we have some really, some really different events that are attract and attract attention, and it's changed in a little bit of really creating that positive buzz about downtown and about the city. So it's good.
Commissioner Coin?
Another question. Would you feel free to share with me publicly what you shared with me yesterday at a meeting about the success of the businesses downtown in terms of this year? In terms of-
You're surprising, you're talking about the, their, the business, the percentage and increase.
Yes.
Yeah. You know, we do do follow-ups, we do surveys, I try to, we do try to stay in touch, especially with email, not so much personal as we'd like because there's so many businesses- like because there's so many businesses now. But we do contact them and try to stay in touch with them. And surprisingly, the winter was really, what, I guess, non-surprising, the winter was really bad. It was really slow. The weather was bad, people weren't coming out. But the summer has been really good. I've had, I've had reports of sales up to twenty, twenty-two percent increase in June and July. The, we, this Blueberry Festival that we had this year was definitely a record breaker. I heard that from a lot of businesses, that it was a, it was their, a record day for all of them as far as sales. So that, in my mind, is good. It's, I, I think that the, the important thing to remember about the DDA is our first responsibility is really the property owners and the property values. But the way that we keep those, you have to keep those property values up is to keep those buildings full. And the way to keep those bullet, buildings full is to support those businesses and to support the environment downtown that provides people, provides interest in, in those businesses.
Thank you.
Commissioner Campana?
I've got to say that since Third Street came under the wing of the DDA, it's, it's just seemed to have improved a whole lot. It's just a lot more vibrant, a lot more, it's busier, it's more active. So, you know, it's been a positive thing. The question I do have is if there's a two-mill tax on every business on Third Street. Now, does that include homeowners that are on Third Street also?
That...
Not a lot of homeowners, but...
Well, yeah, the, the real estate tax would, the two-mill would, yeah.
So if you own a home on Third Street, you're paying the extra...
You'd pay, yeah.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, thank you.
Yep.
But it is, Third Street looks really good. I mean, I had a business there and it just looks a lot better than the last couple of years, for sure. And as far as attending meetings, I know, we had, we had the Village Business District and, you know, at the end of the day, you're just too tired to go to a meeting. It's just, you didn't want to go. So it wasn't that we didn't want to go, it's just you couldn't.
Yep, you're busy running, everybody's busy running their businesses.
Yeah, they are.
And that's why we're here to support them.
Yeah. No, DDA's doing a fine job on Third Street.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Your report, Tim Stonehouse?
Just some, some very positive things, Mona, that obviously the, commend the DDA highly for what they're doing, how they're doing it. It is, it is really just absolutely remarkable. The events that we're having downtown, like Blueberry Festival and, oh gosh, the Rail Jam now, as that's going in, just adds a vibrancy there that I, I think many, many cities would, would kill to have. I mean, it is just remarkable. I, I keep thinking of, of the Rail Jam and understanding that, you know, those kids are out at Marquette Mountain doing their thing all winter long, and they're doing their thing for their buddies because nobody can see them at the rail park. But when they come downtown, they're now doing it for the entire community. And when you think about things that imprint on a kid's mind, it's when he's doing his things in front of all these people downtown Marquette. That's the thing they're going to remember in ten years, twenty years, and for a very long time. So thank you very much for, for making that part of the downtown activity. And it's also interesting to watch all of the tourists wandering around. And you can tell them because they're the ones that, that kind of have the camera, and you see them wandering up and down the street. And you realize how positive that is for everybody, for them to be there and obviously for the merchants, and now have an opportunity with a whole different bunch of people. The one thing I would ask you to continue to work for is the idea of having a shuttle bus that would run down Third Street from northern, down not only Third, but somehow terminating downtown and then coming on back. I think that really is important to get those kids, the students, more involved in the downtown and provide a different venue to, a different opportunities for business folks. If we can, if we can make that work, I think it would be spectacular. But again, thank you for everything that you do.
Commissioner Coyne?
I also want to echo all the nice things people are saying about the DDA, but just coincidentally, this morning on National Public Radio, there was a section on malls and the struggle that malls have now because of the internet. And the comments were made that in order to be competitive, the malls in big cities now are entertaining and restaurants and so forth. And similarly, downtown has had its nemesis, malls. And I think the, the real reality now is down, people, just what Fred just said, people want to be down there, it's fun to be there, there are restaurants there, there's activities, it's clean, it's well-managed. That's why downtown is thriving, because people want to be there. And all you need to do is go to the two malls, and there aren't tourists, there aren't people wandering around, there aren't people eating, there aren't people going to festivals, and they come downtown. And that's a direct result, not by accident, of, I think, your management. So I think that really is relevant. So you got to keep it up, because something else will be after you, whatever.
Well, I mean, I have to throw back at, at you because, I mean, you have to have the support of the city commission, the city administration, to do what the DDA does. If, if it's an adversarial relationship, nothing will ever get done. So, you know, I would, any city with their downtowns, I mean, that, that's the first thing you need, is you need that collaboration, you need to be on the same page with it. So it couldn't be done without the support of the city commission.
Your report, Tim Stonehouse?
Let me just pontificate on, on one more thing if I can. A few weeks ago, I had a chance to take the Great Lakes Commission, many of them, through the downtown waterfront area, the Lower Harbor. And of course, we were talking about waterfront development and all the good things the city's done, and how you take, uh, really something bad, what we were maybe forty or fifty years ago, and make it into what we are today. But one of the takeaways they had that I thought was, was very remarkable, because it really is not quite within their, their bailiwick, was the idea that the waterfront connects so vividly with downtown. So that they almost become one and the same. It's not like you have a waterfront that really looks nice, and you've got a downtown over here that really looks nice. You have the two that come together and feed off each other. And I think they, they saw that very clearly here, more so than they would other places. The other item is the wonderful restaurants we have. I mean, if you want to go eat in a chain restaurant, go on out to the strip and sit down in, in any one of them. But when you, when you're looking at a dining experience, it's really downtown Marquette, where you've got this terrific selection of, of places to eat that is remarkable, it's local. When you talk with people who are traveling and why they stop at where they stop, and why they choose to eat where they choose to eat, invariably, for many of them, it's the idea they want the local experience. They don't want to sit down in a chain, what they can do at home. And again, whatever we can do to foster that, it certainly is, I think, very important to downtown. But thank you again for all the good work that everybody's doing there.
Anything more? Any further, commissioners? I guess I, I just have to say, I thank you for your compliments to us, but you and your staff make it so easy for us to support you that it's, I'm not sure that we, we have to expend much energy. You make it easy and so natural, thank you. I guess that's it for the DDA.
Thank you, Mona. Thank you, honor.
Thank you.
We have, at this point, appears Director Christensen is here. So I propose maybe we, we take the library next and then...
Yes.
Brownfield last. Let me continue with the introduction.
Okay.
Of course, you all know Director Christensen. She's been before the commission very recently to share the operating status and challenges she sometimes faces at the library. But there's probably no more historical basis for, for the government we currently live under than Peter White Public Library. It's been around for well over a hundred years, named after one of our founders. And libraries continue to be, even in the digital age, an absolutely critical source of community identity and a focus of activity within the community. We're very fortunate that that remains true in Marquette. We all know the story that even recently, that's been recognized by the nation from the most senior levels. From time to time, it can be challenging. I know that the way that the Peter White Public Library operates is probably more community-based really than any other organization that we have. Their, their participation rates are always up to, subject to votes by our neighboring institutions. So on top of trying to manage the basic operations of the library and manage the ongoing availability of resources to keep it as spectacular as it is, Pam has gone the one step further and continues to have vibrant programs, vibrant opportunities for the community to come in and use the facility. And it continues to be the heart of Marquette. And I'd like to thank Pam for keeping it pumping and to come here today to give you a sense of what she's proposing for the next year. Welcome.
Thank you. Our budget appears on page one thirty-five. And our authorized positions are pretty much the same as they've been for the past few years. We average about forty employees. Thirteen of those employees are full-time and the rest are part-time. If you noticed our statistics, we have had a few struggles recently. The way libraries are being used is, is changing. And so our attendance has been down somewhat, although we think that might be, when you come into the doors, there are those security gates, and those have counters. And our security gates are aging. There's new technology that's coming along that we'd like to take advantage of, so we don't really want to replace those right now. We'd like to wait until we can take advantage of new technology. So we have purchased auxiliary door counters that will do a more accurate count. The security part of the security gate still works, the counters aren't working so well. And some days, they just freeze up. So while we have had a dip in attendance, I'm not sure if it's exactly as dramatic as those numbers reflect. We just installed those auxiliary counters, so we'll have a little better idea probably after the next couple of months, you know, if our counting was, was off. But that shows that our daily attendance is somewhat off, and our circulation has been off. And some of this, I think, is because there are other ways that people access information nowadays. And while the book is still very important to a majority of people, there are a lot of people who are taking advantage of electronic access. And the library does provide electronic books in eBooks and audio formats. But our funding for that program is limited, and not everybody can get what they want. Sometimes when you go onto that system, you, you have to wait for books. And so I know there are a lot of people who might just go and download that from Amazon or some other provider. Our computer sign-ins have dropped somewhat. We do count the sign-ins on each of our public workstations, as well as people who come in and use computers, laptops, that they bring their own equipment. Use of computers is very strong. We have an eighteen-seat lab, and the other day I was up there and all eighteen seats were busy. So there are still a number of people who use the library to access computers, the internet resources that they find that way. One of our bright areas is our programming, and I think it is one of our strengths. We, we partner with a lot of other organizations in the area. And our programming, especially adult programming, seems to be more and more popular. It's not uncommon that our programming coordinator, Margaret Boyle, will have two or three programs going on during a day. And many times, they overlap and other staff have to help staff one or more of the programs just because Margaret can't be in two places at once. So that is an area that we see growing. Our film series are tremendously popular. I just, I, I can't believe it, how many film series. And we have a new newsletter coming out that's jam-packed with all of the things that will be happening in September, October, and November. And it just amazes me how much, you know, goes on at the library. Reference questions, passport applications, and interlibrary loans are the same. Our non-resident cards have been up. We lost the residents of Powell Township two years ago, and a number of those, you know, people have decided that they want to purchase a card at the library. As Bill mentioned, we do receive funding from five surrounding townships, Chukle, Marquette, Sands, Scandia, and West Branch Townships through a contract for services millage. We have a renewal of that millage scheduled in Marquette Township for November fourth. And we will also have a library services contract millage on the ballot in Powell Township. The figures on the budget here do reflect a continuation of the Marquette Township funding, but they do not include Powell Township. If Powell Township passes, that will generate probably about sixty-eight thousand dollars in additional revenues. As you can see, our, our revenues have stayed somewhat static over the last few years. We don't seem to have a great deal of swing. Thank goodness, we, we have very good support from the community and from donors. We raise about ten percent of our budget in fundraising. Without that money, we'd never be able to operate the way we do. Our operational expenses for utilities and building maintenance, you know, continue to stay about the same. That's probably the most challenging. We pay more for electricity than we do for new materials. We have undertaken this past year a number of energy efficiency projects, which we are seeing pay off. We're still looking at a few other things that we might be able to do to improve energy efficiency, reduce our electricity. The Board of Light and Power just installed LED parking lots, parking lights for us at our parking lot. And we are in the process of transitioning a lot of our lighting to LED, probably over the next three to four years, as we have funding available. One of the things that we have done that has been somewhat unpopular, although the unpopularity hasn't really hit full force, is we did adopt summer hours this summer to try and contain some of our utility costs and our staff costs. And in developing this budget, the board decided that they would continue with those summer hours. So we will open an hour later each day, Monday through Friday, we'll be opening at ten o'clock instead of nine AM. And I have already gotten some negative comments about that, probably once school starts, I will. But the board felt that if we had to trim our hours in order to maintain a balanced budget, they'd rather do it at the front end of the day when we're less busy than in the evenings where we have so much programming and people who work till five or six, and students, you know, are able generally to take, use the library more evenings. So we'll see how that impacts, one, our circulation and our attendance, but also, hopefully, it will help us to maintain a balanced budget. I don't know if you have any questions about the line items? I'd be happy to answer those if you do.
I have one quick question. Like, for instance, if Marquette Township doesn't approve the millage, what would be the loss of revenue? And what would be the expense to the, the township residents to get a non-resident card?
Township revenues for this year from Marquette Township are estimated to be about two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. That would dramatically change our operations. The current cost for a non-resident library card is a hundred and fifteen dollars for an individual. So that's, um, that would be what an, an, excuse me, an individual would pay to purchase a card. And the way we set that rate, the state library says that you have to set that rate in accordance to what your taxpayers pay. So that's really based on what the average homeowner in the city of Marquette pays in taxes each year.
How would that, based on the cards that are issued, currently issued to Marquette Township, how would the, have you ever calculated one fifteen times the number of cards versus the millage or...
Actually, if all of their people who are currently registered for cards registered, it would be more, we would receive more revenues than we would from the taxes. it would be more, we would receive more revenues than we would from the taxes. The thing about that is people don't always buy their cards on a regular basis, so it's not stable and dependable funding like the tax revenues are.
It's just a curiosity.
Yeah.
Commissioner Coyne?
I have my traditional question on your budget. I noticed your adult book outlay is zero. Could you explain that?
You know what we did was, our department had, some of them for materials, had two or three or four different line items. And so what we did this year, with the help of the city, was kind of compressed. So we had a reference book line item for the adult collection. We had an adult books. We had DVDs, et cetera, and that's all placed into one line item. And that would be, let's see, under capital outlay, adult books. No, wait, let's see, where is that?
Reference.
Yeah. Is it under reference? Yep, it's all been tabulated under reference.
Oh, I'm relieved.
That's just a little easier. Well, the department has, rather than having to adjust each line item if perhaps they overspent in reference or in circulating, prefer having it all as one lump sum and then looking to see. Because sometimes you don't need to purchase certain reference books every year. Some of them aren't updated every year. So that just lets the staff be a little bit more judicious in how they spend their money.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
Just a comment or thought. I don't have this planned out, but, you know, I guess there are a couple of attitudes you could take toward a library, you know? It's there, if people want to use it, fine. If not, well, that's, you know, that's life. I don't take that attitude, and I know you don't either, because I think the library does add something unique to the community, and it becomes part of who we are. But obviously, as you point out, changes are occurring. Trends are changing, things are different. It's, you know, it's not the way it used to be. So I think it's really important that you continue to keep your eye on that ball, you know? And as you point out, while some attendance is dropping, program attendance is increasing. So I think there are many good reasons to keep the library vibrant. And, you know, I'm not telling you something you don't know, and you don't need my encouragement, but I'm just offering it, because I think it's important, you know, that our library continue to be strong and vibrant. And that probably means it's going to continue to change somewhat as the world changes. Is that a correct assessment?
I think so, because when I came to Peter White 23 years ago, we had, I believe it was eight computers in the building, and we now have almost 100. So that was a huge change in how people access information and how we work. One of the new trends that we're exploring is a lot of libraries are developing spaces, which they call maker spaces, where they have 3D printers and all sorts of things that people can use, you know, to help them with their everyday life. Some people are actually using them to set up businesses or create things that they can sell in a small business. That's one of the things we're looking at. We also, I think, are expanding some of our teen programming. We have a couple of staff members who are very interested in graphic novels and comics, and so that's a new strength on our staff that we're taking advantage of. So I think that we are constantly evolving, but when you're in a financial situation where you don't have a lot of extra money to spend or to waste, you know, trying out new things, it's a little bit harder than it is other times. And of course, we're very good at getting grants, but the grant situation has dried up dramatically since 2008, and those larger grants just aren't that easy to come by. So we are really seeing the strength in the people that support us and, you know, the private and businesses in the community. Those folks are really supporting us, and our fundraising efforts have been very good.
Do you have any sense of outside visitors coming to our library, using our library? Some way to gauge that or measure that?
We don't really, you know, we don't have somebody standing at the door asking where you're from, but we do get a lot of visitors. I mean, that's what a lot of people who live in Marquette tell me is, whenever we have someone come from out of town, the first place we take them is the library. And we do see a lot of people, especially in the summer months, doing local history and genealogical research. We see a lot of visitors who come to search their family tree, go through all of the microfilm editions of past newspapers of the area. And so I would say probably on any given day, it's probably a 40% to 60% split.
Well, and it kind of underscores the point I was trying to make before. You know, we talked about the great restaurants we have in Marquette. Well, that's great, but we have to have things to do as well, you know? And, you know, I put the library and the history museum and children's museum and maritime museum and, you know, this is kind of where we've placed our emphasis. You know, we don't have a water park, but we do have some interesting things for people to see and do. So continuing to evolve to meet that need, I think, is really important. And I applaud you for doing that.
Commissioner Coyne?
I have a comment, two comments. One, I do the, it's the reverse of what Commissioner Ryan said about visitors. Whenever I go to a city, I visit the library, mainly to compare it to our library. And so far, and I have been accused of traveling a lot, you still, to me, rate number one in terms of quality and staff and building and sense of community. And I do visit, and the last time we were together in a town, that's where I wanted to go, and it just doesn't measure up quite. And in particular, in the UP and in Michigan, when you say you're from Marquette and talk about the library, in the other libraries, they are very respected and jealously looked at because of the public act that supports you, wishing all libraries, all libraries wish they had that. And the other is a comment about the hours. It is not our responsibility to comment on it, but I just would say congratulations on that kind of decision. I think that's a prudent decision to make. And, you know, if you look at, when you go out in the morning, a lot of businesses do not open till 10:00, and for one reason is they don't have traffic. And I think that's a good decision you've made to do. Thanks.
Mayor Pratim Stonehouse?
A couple of quick things. Like Commissioner Coyne, I travel a fair amount, and during the course of a year, I'll do a number of library programs across the state and Midwest. And nothing compares to the Peter White. I mean, they're nice people, and they're great facilities, but you are so far above them in a whole host of measurable factors. It's really remarkable. You know, we use the term jewel to describe a lot of the things we have in the city. Prescott Park, the harbor, the waterfront, the library. But really, we should probably be reserving the term crown jewel, I think, for Peter White, because it's just as remarkably that good. One personal question, if I can, Pam, just to add some perspective. How long have you been a librarian?
You really want me to say that?
You can make up the number.
I hate to think about it, because when I came here 23 years ago, people told me how young I was. And it's been a while since anybody's mentioned that. But I actually started my library career in 1979 at the Luddington Public Library.
You must have seen changes.
Yes.
I mean, we've all, as customers, seen changes within the facility, but you, as being within the facility, must have seen remarkable change occur.
That's amazing.
Thank you for keeping us on the edge of it. Thank you.
Well, I think it's my staff that does that.
Commissioner Coyne?
We could, if you'd like, pass a resolution saying you still look very, you know, looking...
Well, that would be nice.
I'll try to get that on the agenda.
Anything further from anyone?
No, thank you.
I guess I'd just like to echo all the laudatory comments. I mean, Peter White is an amazing asset to the city, and I certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
I guess we...
Thank you, Pam.
We'll move on.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, let me invite Ms. Sherry Davie to join us here at the bench. Keeping with tradition, let me offer a few comments. This one, for me, actually, has been one of the most interesting to watch. When I first came on board, the Brownfield Authority executive director's role was actually just another duty as assigned for the office manager and the city manager's front office. And we recognized that, as an organization that was really kind of at a startup phase, that it needed to take on the full responsibility so the city could get the full benefit of that legislation and of those projects. And Ms. Davie agreed to come on at what laughably now seems like a part-time role, to manage all of the different things that we've got going on. And since that time, she's been supported by an excellent board. We've got a lot of residents who've really contributed a lot of value to helping move those projects forward. And I'm confident with the way we're watching the development of the city and the interests of the developers and taking advantage of Brownfield incentives, that she's going to become much more busy. And so with all of that, I can tell you, she handles it with aplomb. It's not always an easy role, and it's not always an easy challenge to manage the multitude of moving parts that come along with all of these Brownfield projects. But I think she's absolutely exceeding expectations, and I'm looking forward to hearing about all the great things that she's got planned for next year. So let me turn it over to Sherry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here with you. This is my first budget hearing, so please do be gentle. I have our awesome treasure and your city treasure with us for moral support and for the really, really tough questions, so... But on behalf of the Ember Board, I'm delighted to be here. Our chair unfortunately is out of the area and won't be with us today. But I want to thank you for all of the support that you have provided. The city commissioners, the manager, and the city staff have continued to be supportive of this new, growing venture of our Brownfield. We have an enthusiastic and visionary board. We have some great talents that have pulled together to work with the issues that have come before us. We're still looking for two more board members. I appreciate the fact that you put out the call at your meetings for new members, and we are continuing, as a board, to fill our board so that we have a complete board. I am the only full-time, well, full-time, part-time employee administratively, so basically, I'm staff. We have a consultant, Mac McClellan, who continues to serve us out of Traverse City. He's a Brownfield consultant, but other than that, it's our team is myself and Diane, our board, and Mac. We have standing by a consultant in parking lot structures. We've researched that to make sure that we have someone. We find ourselves in our projects and perhaps new projects that may be in place. Parking structure seems to be a big topic, so we wanted to be prepared. We've not expended any funds at this point, but have someone standing by that will be able to assist us to make sure that we're using our funds wisely when we approach that. The budget pages for the Brownfield are pages 126 through 130 in your budget book. You have been provided with a summary document that will cover those pages, broken down by project. As you are aware, we currently have three active projects, and that would be Cliff Stow, Founder's Landing, and the Veridia Liberty Way project. We also have a pending Brownfield project for a bed and breakfast that we anticipate will be coming forward to you sometime next month. We, I don't know if you have questions on the specifics of the project, of any of the I guess what I would do is offer kind of an update on where we're at as far as the various projects. As you're aware, we spent a great deal of time and effort working with the Founder's Landing project over the last year, and it was very, very time-intensive. We were looking and worked with an attorney from Miller Canfield to help us negotiate the terms from which we move further with the Founder's Landing, and that was with the intent of making sure that funds and good decisions were happening, that were going to protect the city, the Brownfield, and the area, as well as meet the needs of the developer. Currently, we are in a, I wouldn't say a holding pattern, but the Brownfield is waiting for the Founder's Landing group to come back to us. They are working on some internal issues, but anticipate coming back to us within the next month, month and a half. So that is not a dead issue. It's in a holding pattern right now. But the Brownfield is prepared to pick up where we left off and continue on with that. So I anticipate you'll be hearing more about that very soon. But just to assure you, things are continuing, will continue in that project.
Could I ask a question there, Your Honor?
Sure.
Obviously, we have obligations going forward. Will the, maybe delay is not the right word, but the fact that this project is not moving ahead more rapidly, that obviously will affect TIF revenues. Is that a concern at this point?
I don't believe so. I think we have budgeted appropriately, that, you know, it's a tight budget we have, and obviously, that would be a really nice boost. But I think we're safe. Obviously, on their end, it's a difficult thing as well, because entering into the fall season, we've lost a whole season here. But I think we're, I think we're okay.
And I guess the reason I ask is I think, and I don't have all the numbers, but I think a lot of the site development costs were upfront in the, excuse me, in that project around the Hampton Inn. And so I assume there are big expenditures there to cover.
Right. Well, and the Hampton, obviously, is online.
Right.
Yeah.
So basically, you think we're okay as far as meeting our obligations?
I believe that. That's true. I would ask Diane.
We're okay for now.
But we'll certainly encourage movement as quickly as we can.
Besides the commercial development near the Hampton, were there two additional housing units that anticipated, or three, or?
There was another additional housing development. Those continue to come online.
Okay.
And...
I'm talking about on the other side of the street, where the houses have all been developed, the condos?
Oh, yeah. You know, I'm not sure what the status of that is. I'd be happy to get back with you on that.
Again, it's just, you know, the only concern is that we be able to meet our obligations going forward.
Yes. Yes. Yep.
Thanks.
Moving on to...
Mayor Pratim Stonehouse?
Excuse me. Question, if I can, it's going to be a little speculative, but I think should probably be addressed. We're sitting here at this big hole in the ground. We have a development group that is demonstratively not doing development on the big hole in the ground. And we have kind of a continuing string of promises that they will be doing development. Have you detected anything that might be suggestive that they're just going to sell the property to somebody who can do the development?
I have not. No, I have not.
Is there any action from the Brownfield side that we can do to cause them to meet that obligation? Or can they just sit on this forever and ever?
Well, I guess this is something I would probably ask my board to take a position on. We have a meeting next week, and it might be appropriate to have something come from the board that makes, puts forth that question. So I'm not sure legally if there's anything we can do, but as long as we're not in jeopardy, I don't think there's been a sense of...
It's, you know, it's almost a case of, one of the common questions you get on the street is, what are we going to do with that big hole in the ground?
I know.
And, you know, it would be nice to see some action towards the big hole in the ground. I'm not blaming anyone particularly here, but if we have an impasse, then we... I'm not blaming anyone particularly here, but if we have an impasse, then we have an impasse.
Uh huh.
So thank you for your comments.
City Manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. Let me try to help bail Sherry out a little bit. I appreciate her being sensitive to not wanting to speak on behalf of the board. Some of the bona fide, and Kyle Whitney has been participating as our staff liaison to the Brownfield Authority, so that's how I've come into this information. But what Sherry mentioned, there's been some restructuring within the Founder's Landing group. Some members have pulled out of that group, and there are new people who are coming on board. Since they rejected our earlier offer this year, they've gone back and taken a look at redoing that portion of the project plan. So where it had been a single footprint before, now they're looking at multiple phases and at least two different buildings. They're, I know actively engaged with financiers within Michigan, not just within the local area. So they're in the process of trying to put together a new footprint for how they propose to come back and execute against the project. I believe Sherry's been prudent in lining up the expertise she needs to figure out how the brownfields investment would be managed. So I think they've pushed it as far as they can go in trying to be responsive both to the existing Founder's Group and to try accommodating the changes that are going on within the private entity. So I think from that perspective, they're already in a state of transition, and I know Sherry's trying to be sensitive to giving that partner room to solidify even as she expresses her interest and the brownfields' interest in seeing the project move forward a little bit more aggressively. But at this point, I would say what we're, it's my understanding we're looking at there is on the private partner's side, there's a substantial amount of transition going on, and that's to some extent creating some of the delay we're seeing.
Is there a revised development agreement that's going to come for the last mixed-use development?
Then, yes, there definitely is, and that's what has taken a lot of time.
Right.
Through the, like, I think February, March was the timeframe. Yes, there will be, and that's kind of sitting in a holding pattern as well because until we have the Founder's Landing group come back and start in again, but most assuredly, and I would certainly be hopeful that you would be seeing that, you know, optimistically by the end of the year, you know, looking at, now we're almost September, so, yes, hopefully while you're still here, yes.
Any other questions at this point? Proceed then.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Liberty Way, Veridia, I'm sure you're aware that things are moving along very well there. Marquette's first extended stay is in the process of being put in place. We will be, they have M Bank and a Chicago-based architect, and I'm sure a number of you have had a chance to visit their premises and see that things are moving along very well. We will be looking at the street improvements next year, and that has been discussed and determined, you know, where we will be putting financial resources on that. We have, I don't know if there was anything else to add. Oh, the utility line is another component of that, which you see in the budget, and that was at their request, and they had restructured their agreement to cover that amount of money, so. But they determined that to be an important component of their building project, and I think there have been other folks in the area that have noted, you know, the potential improvement of having that, so. Anyway, that will be in next year's project. As I mentioned, we have another potential project possibly coming online in the fall, and it'll be a bed and breakfast. To my knowledge, there aren't any other B&amp;Bs in market, are there, in the city? So this will again be a first and be neat to have the brownfield be a supporter of that. We will continue, obviously, to look for federal grants, state grants that help support our current and future projects. We look forward to standing ready to serve and support the city as they look at the challenges ahead in the various, the energy plant, Duke Life Point, whatever the brownfield can provide, we want to be part of that, so. I don't know if there are any other thoughts or questions on some of the other budgets?
Mayor Penna?
Sherry, just looking at your salary, it shows that you're probably still at halftime.
Yes.
And I, you know, it should be pointed out that I know you guys, you're working more than halftime, and we do appreciate that. I know you're a hard-working organization. I know that you're dealing with the Founder's Landing, there's you and, you know, two or three other board members. It's a volunteer organization, but they were putting in an awful lot of time, so people should know that.
Yes.
Your organization's working very hard, so you're doing a very good job, and, you know, people should know that, that it was, a lot of extra hours were put in for that project that is kind of like going nowhere, but, you know, you still put in the hours, so. It seems you're doing a very good job. You've got good members, you do have good members on that board.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to add as well, we had those volunteer board members, we were meeting like a couple times a week, number of hours, and you as well were there in the beginning process of that, and it's amazing, you know, to have board members give that kind of time when they're all very, very busy people. But I think we all really do have the eye on the prize here. We're optimistic that this is going to turn into a really terrific project for the city. So even though it feels like at times we've plugged along and nothing's happening, things are happening, very good things.
It would be nice to see it, yeah, finally.
Yes.
Followed through.
Yes.
I'm sure...
You'll do your part, but you're right. It's just by the way...
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
What's the total commitment under the Liberty Way project? I know there's a city commitment and some other site development. Do you recall that number?
Is that the $320,000? Yeah, right, for the bond.
That's for this year, but what is the total? What will their total use of the...
I'm sure with all the street improvements and the...
Yeah.
You know, I'm not sure. Diane, can you help with that?
It would be the reconstruction, Diane, of the intersection of the streets, underground.
The underground cable is estimated at about $400,000, and the street scape was at $320,000 approximately.
There was some connection to the bike path, as I recall, is that part of what you're calling?
That's all part of it, yep. It's all part of it.
Okay.
The underground cable, is that the city's responsibility?
There was discussion on how that might play into some other things the city was doing, so I think that was going to fall under the capital improvement program, so there was going to be kind of a sharing.
Is the $400,000, is there room in the development plan or the development plan budget to accommodate that $400,000?
Yes, yes.
How was that, how did that happen?
They restructured some other costs, and they didn't come in quite as high, so they were able to utilize those funds.
Is that going to extend the length of the TIF?
I don't believe so.
Or is it going to reduce the amount that goes into the revolving fund at the end?
I wouldn't think so, would you?
It's hard to tell right now, but I don't think so. We'll just have to watch if it will go longer.
The summary, by the way, is very good because there's all these funds, and it's nice to have it on one sheet of paper to see the totality of it.
Our treasurer's responsible for that, and our board has really appreciated that as well. It's been very, very helpful.
Questions from anyone? Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The Mbaras is one of our success stories.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Your Honor, at this point, we have wrap-up scheduled. We've been here for two hours, I'd suggest. The next segment is really just closing. I'm going to turn it over to CFO Simpson to lead us through that. If you'd like to take a short break, we could accommodate that, but this one, at this point in time, particularly for the new members, this is where the city commission gets an opportunity to give us the closing views so that we can make adjustments or make sure that we're making appropriate changes prior to the public hearing scheduled for the 25th. So at this point, Your Honor, if you'd like to take a break, great, otherwise, I'm going to ask CFO Simpson to lead us through...
Do you? Anyone? Do we need a break?
Okay, great.
Proceed.
Thank you. Gary, please, why don't you lead us through?
Okay, thank you. Well, this concludes the presentation part of the budget. We've now gone through the complete city budget, so thank you for your patience while we did that and asked a lot of good questions. And at this point, we're just going to turn it over to you. We do have a public hearing scheduled for next Monday night at the city commission meeting, August 25th, and hopefully adoption of the budget after the public hearing, once we hear citizens' comment. So you have an opportunity now if there are any changes you want to see in the budget or Monday night as well after the public hearing, but if we could get those, if you have changes you want to submit now, that would be most excellent on our part. But to make a change to the budget, it would require a motion and a majority, a yes vote to change anything at this point, so.
City Manager?
All right, just for the edification, folks who might be watching from home, as you've been making comments, of course, we've been tracking those, staff's been taking those as action items, and so all of the previous comments that you've made during session, you'll see reflected in what we're going to propose for the public hearing. This is really an opportunity to reflect any new revisions or any other thoughts you might have and how we can present it on the 25th to hopefully what will be the majority of the commission's approval.
Could you give us a summary of what you have planned or?
Do you want to go over it, Gary?
Yeah, but we have, do you want to give them maybe a discussion about this sheet, give them a sense of how they're going to do it?
Sure. Most of the changes that have occurred, there haven't been any real changes to numbers, just kind of the format of the budget. Like, when you came to your seats this morning, we had already handed out one set of changes. On page 41 of the budget, how the promo fund is displayed, we just made it, one of the comments was try to make it more easily comparable to the previous year, and this is what we came up with. And then another comment was dealing with, you know, as far as the enterprise funds, whether the replacement reserves, and we provided that information, and we'll make that a part of the regular budget presentation in the future. And I know Carl Zugger, the community services director, he was working on quite a number of issues and...
On that regard, I'll be glad to kind of share the blow-by-blow. The first day on August 12th, there weren't very many changes requested specifically of the budget document, but there was a number of suggestions for additional information that I believe have been provided as follow-up. Commissioner Ryan had suggested that we get some additional PSAs out so that people understood how to watch on live TV. There were requests from a couple of different commission members asking to compare both the police and fire budgets to our neighbors to get some sense of what the comparable staffing levels and expenditures look like. The day after, when Director Zugger was on board, there were a number of different changes that were requested. Some of the more significant ones were about the enterprise fund reserve balances for all the different enterprise funds. There were some specific questions about the, how the percentage of salary for the assistant community services manager was being attributed to the senior fund, how that was calculated, the promotion fund changes that Gary mentioned a moment ago. There was substantial follow-up in regards to how costs and costs are allocated for all of the community service programs, requests for the marginal cost of ice per hour, estimates for usage for resident, non-resident. There were some suggestions for some follow-on work sessions after the budget's been adopted that speak to how we move forward with community outreach and tease out more of these cost recovery issues within the context of the regional recreation authority discussion, some suggestions on how to move forward with waterfront planning, possibly even to look at it as something that we might do as an enterprise fund. And then the following meeting on Friday, there were some aesthetic changes, as well as with Director Zugger, there were some aesthetic changes to specific column titles and things like that, labels, corrections in the sheets. On Friday, we continued to see that. We also saw with the provision of the water rate study for the different community comparisons, Director Zugger offered that we'll be providing an update per the three-year cycle on our own agreements with our neighbors.
Director Zugger, or was that Goodman?
Goodman, excuse me, Goodman. We had also some questions about how Director Goodman was calculating his timeout, which we'll be following up on. So there were a variety of things where they were grammatical changes or aesthetic changes to the document itself. Although there was great dialogue and it gave us a very clear sense of where the commission priorities were, there wasn't specific direction so far on any particular line item that asked us to change what we're doing moving forward. And we frequently mentioned that as part of the baseline process plus the supplemental appropriations that the charter now provides for, that there would be at least three other opportunities throughout the year for the city commission to take some kind of scheduled action as part of the tranches that we expect as the revenue side firms up, as well as potentially addressing some of the other issues that there wasn't full unanimity of the board in view. So at this point, we haven't got anything explicitly other really than aesthetic changes that the commission's asked us to take on for the 25th, and although we're following up on all the different things I just spoke to, none of them yet have been specific direction to change anything.
So the moral of the story is the numbers haven't changed any, and we did publish the public hearing notice on Saturday with the numbers, and so those are in the numbers we're going with unless today or Monday night you give us different direction, but...
I guess that, Commissioner Ryan?
The tough part about this whole project is, you know, as a commissioner, we get to the end of the line, you know, when we have a $20 million budget almost, and it's kind of take it or leave it. And, you know, there are some things about the budget I don't like, mainly having to do with the fees, but I don't know that anybody else is going to jump on that bandwagon with me, so. Number one, I don't, you know, this new fee for community events, I can't think of a community event that we've had when at least one or more people sitting at this table haven't said, wasn't it great that we had this event going on? Most of the events we have are part of who we are, part of our identity, and this idea of having a $660 fee...
What page are you?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Of having a $660 fee for a new event or a $330 fee for an annual event. I understand where you're coming from, you know, but I just, it's not something that I think is a good idea. I think it discourages, a prior commission, and maybe Commissioner Coines is part of that, but at one point was forced to move the city in the direction of not supporting events, and this commission, since I've been here, has moved in the opposite direction of providing a mechanism to support events and waive fees and do some things, you know, that allow those events to go forward. So that's one in particular. The second... The second one has to do with, on page 20, some of the increases in fees for permits, for site plan review, those kinds of issues. You know, when it comes to a large project, I don't think it's an issue. But when you get to a medium-sized project, or a small project, you know, these often are people trying to make our community a better place. And, you know, to add more permits or make it more difficult is, to me, is counterproductive. The other one is the area of activity fees for youth sports. And I've been pretty much alone on that one, so I'm not going to waste a lot of your time. But, you know, I think we miss a big point when we, when we look at coming up with special fees for non-residents in youth sports. It's those non-residents who help make the program work. You know, if you didn't have them as part of the process, you wouldn't have the program you have, and particularly when it comes to hockey. And, you know, if the hockey program goes away, it just makes our problem, our financial problem worse. So that's just my general take on some fees. You know, if anybody else wants to jump in on any of them, that's fine. If not, we'll, you know, we'll be where we are, I guess.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
I agree with Commissioner Ryan regarding the community event fees. I'm looking at the 660 and the 330, and I think he really is right on when he talks about discouraging the type of event that really has been so very good to the city. And, you know, for many smaller organizations, that's a pretty stiff amount of money to come up with just to start. So I would be very much in favor of seeing both of those go away. My opinion. Thank you.
Commissioner Reynolds?
I agree with both Don and Fred. As I went back through this budget last night, it was the only thing I had circled and said, no. So I remember Fred brought that up the other day, and that's why I circled it, because I remembered I wanted to look back to it and see how much it was actually bringing in as far as revenue. And also, when I went back through the budget, I noticed that, like, there was no, the fees were not raised as far as fines and costs, like, for cop services and things like that. And I thought to myself, if we needed to make it up somewhere, why wouldn't we just, you know, charge somebody an extra $5 for some kind of parking violation instead of charging these people who are trying to do better for our community? So that's, that was just my thought.
Commissioner Coines?
Well, I understand their concerns, the three previous commissioners, but I think the challenge is going to be, if you get rid of those, you have to come up with another source of revenue or cut something. And if you want to direct them to either cut something or increase revenue somewhere else, this is a balanced budget as presented. So you can't just say, well, just get rid of that. You have to either raise something else or cut the program, cut different programs. So other than those things that have been mentioned, I think this was a very difficult task this year. You did a great job. You've allowed for three times to adjust this, depending on if revenues increase. But I think, rather, I don't know if we could decide to get rid of those today, but in order to have me support that, you have to have an alternative to those funds not being raised. And the question I have is, you know, we're talking about $20 million, and this one fund raised $7,000. Well, I mean, that's pretty small. It's not worth arguing for four hours over $7,000. But do you have, I'd like to ask the manager, do you have any suggestions as to what to cut, or what, how else you could raise that money in order to balance the budget?
Thank you, your honor. Not at this time. We're, for anything where we're looking for you to, we're looking for something other than the mood of the commission. This is a special meeting, so anything that you would propose to change, we're looking for a resolution and vote so that we can make that change. The challenge, then, will be for us to go back and have to answer that question for the 25th.
Well, don't you need, you need four commissioners to say, we don't like that fee, change it?
Yes, exactly. But we'd like that by vote, because we've presented this, we've presented this as the balanced budget. We'd like you to tell us specifically what, at this point, you'd like us to change. Eliminating things at this point, then, is clear direction. We'll go back and try to figure out what that offsetting trade would be, either with suggestions like Commissioner Reynolds has forwarded, or through some other way to manage it within the supplemental appropriation.
But it should be done by a motion, so you have direction from at least the majority of the commission here.
Exactly.
Gary, don't we have a $340,000 balancing item in the revenue section? Like, I had referred to-
Yes, I committed Susan Bohr to finding that. I committed Susan Bohr to finding that when she comes back from vacation on Monday, so.
Your honor, that's actually not, like, fund balance. That's something that we're hoping to recover based on cost savings and HR.
But it is listed as a, it's a, it's a revenue that would balance out if we were to eliminate that fee, potentially, Susan, assuming Susan finds that money, that would balance out those types of changes.
Correct.
Could balance out those types of changes.
As long as I'm alive on Tuesday morning after she gets back Monday, then I can balance it out.
What is the probability that she would be able to accomplish the task that you've put in there for her?
As she was leaving, she told me she was confident. I hope I didn't misunderstand that, as she was leaving. But I want to add too, for those fees, it's not out to punish, you know, like the Harbor Fest that's coming up, or any of those other festivals, because they can apply for fee relief through those things. This is mostly for those events that, you know, aren't the normal ongoing, and these are kind of the spur-of-the-moment type of events that put a lot of stress and strain on city staff. So it's just try to recoup some money that, you know, once these things happen and people start spurring into action, it's just to help recover those costs. It's not out to punish, you know, like Blueberry Fest, or Harbor Fest, or any of those others.
Right. When the discussion, to recall, your honor, we would fully expect that they would look to have this fee relieved when they came in to do it. But a lot of the, a lot of the non-promotional-related events that go on, people come in with a good idea, but then it's staff that ends up doing all the work. And so this is one of, this is one of those criteria where just trying to recover that expense was, was, what was the intent behind that fee.
May I put, Mr. Stone? Oh, I'm, okay.
No, I, you know, part of my issue with this whole discussion is, you know, there's a whole piece of revenue we haven't included in this budget, which is revenue sharing. And I understand, you know, we have to be prudent about it, but nevertheless, we're not going to, we're not going to go through this year with no statutory revenue sharing.
That's correct, your honor. And what we've said all along is, as that revenue firms up, then we're going to put that back in and add these kind of items back in. But, but that's different from the fee. We can add in all the different things that you've seen from the capital plans and from what you've heard from the department heads as those revenues firm up. And you can also change the fees at any time, but this is, this is what we would propose for baseline fee. So if you're going to eliminate the fee, then whether we immediately add in the associated revenue, or whether it's something that we add later on in tranches, that's something we'd want to take a look at.
What is the, the timing of the potential assessment of these fees and the request for promotion? We do have a list of promotional items in this budget. Are those set, or do people have another bite at the apple to request a relief of a fee?
And these would not, these would not necessarily be related with promotional items. So some may, some may not, but they can come in at any time and schedule activities in the city, and they can also come in at any time and ask for fee relief.
Don't we have a period when people are?
We do. We have a period where we're soliciting applications for promotional funding.
That period?
It's from October 31st to January 1st every calendar year. But we do not have anything in that ordinance that says that's the exclusive period that people can come in. That's really for us to manage the budget process better and to manage the calendar better for everybody who's trying to use these facilities. But there's nothing in there that prohibits folks from coming in outside of that time window to ask for the same kind of relief.
May I put, Mr. Stonehouse?
What I'm wrestling with, what I'm having trouble with, is that we have 25 organizations that we're giving fee relief to, all for a very good purpose. And then we're establishing another annual fee that theoretically, for each of them, they'd have to pay, or we would have to give fee relief to. So I'm scratching my head and saying, why are we providing a fee that we're only going to relieve anyway? And that really acts to a point as a detriment for people, another hurdle they have to go through to do an annual event they've always done. And when we get to a 660 for a new event, again, that just seems to me to be a very large amount of money for a smaller organization that may want to do something. So I'm very uncomfortable having those in the budget.
Now, clearly, we understand. We have to account for all the costs per the charter. That was something that, based on all of the nonspecific costs that go into sponsoring these events, has to be charged. It's entirely up to the City Commission to decide if they want to have these fees included in the schedule or not. That's why we need you to specifically direct us what, what you'd like us to do with this fee. And then we need a little bit of time to come back and tell you, to Commissioner Coines' point, how we would offset the revenue impact of that fee.
I can, can I make a quick comment? I can see a, I can see the rationale behind this fee, but I see a difference between the community event "new" versus the community event "annual." And perhaps, you know, you're explaining that staff gets left with some work, you know, with each event. Certainly, "new" would be more likely for that to occur than with "annual," but I could see where it could be with "annual" too. And perhaps you need to educate the groups that, no, don't dump that in our lap. You need to have volunteers that take care of that. Certainly, the "new" event fee might be different than an "annual." And although I suppose the "annual" probably is more predictive because we're going to clip everyone who's got established events for the 330 versus the "new."
Thank you, your honor. Yeah, I think, we've been pretty consistent. It's not the annual events or the usual promotional partners that create this challenge. It's very frequently the "new." And we concur with all of the discussion we've heard. It's not something that we're trying to create some new hoop. We fully expect that if a partner were assessed that, that they would come in and ask for that kind of fee relief. And so in that particular case, it would be a bookkeeping exercise that would be de minimis. The real focus where we think you would see it would be on these new events where there's, there's no history in the community of the organizers being able to pull something off. And so at that point, then, you spend a lot of time and resources as the city trying to get ready for something. And then if the event doesn't happen according to plan, or if the organizer backs out, you can't get any of that city investment back. It's just a, it's just a lost, sunk investment that you've made. And we've run into that from time to time. The city, three or four years ago, was the second-largest backer for the biking events that were going on in downtown. And we had $7,000 invested into the event, and then the organizer canceled it. And it took a couple of years for them to put their organization back together and get it on board. That was $7,000. That was just, at that time, wasn't covered by any fees, but it was staff time, it was preparations, it was other things, and it was just out of pocket for the city. And since that time, we've put the ordinances in place. We've put the criteria in place to make sure that the promotional expenditures are matching the prestige and the marketing and the branding goals of the city. We're, and we're supporting, as Commissioner, or, excuse me, as Mayor Protem Stonehouse pointed out, many, many groups who are taking advantage of that. But we still hope to have new ones come on board. And at some point in time, there's a difference between a brand-new organization and a 25-year-old organization, or a 10-year-old organization. So we'll continue to make those investments. We'll continue to do the staff work. It doesn't reflect any, any of the approval, or the permitting, or any of the rest of that process. But it provides a mechanism for, for the government to recoup at least some of that fee. And again, like we've been saying, if the commission wants to get rid of the fee, fine. If they want, if they would like to handle it on a tranch basis and let folks come in as they come up with ideas for events, that's fine, too. We just need, we just need a definitive set of direction from the commission, because we can't, once the fee's established, we can't waive it. And so if there's, if there's another way to recover the costs, or if there's other revenue, we'd like to come back and share that on the 25th. But we need definitive, definitive guidance from the commission on how you'd like us to proceed with that budget item now.
Commissioners, what is your pleasure regarding this item?
Well, let's give a clearer, see, I will- I will motion to eliminate both fees.
There, second. Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Stonehouse, second by Commissioner Reynolds, to remove the, on page 24, am I correct, the community event "new" and community event "annual" fees?
Yes.
Okay. Anything further, Commissioner Stonehouse?
I think we've discussed it, and we should give clear direction to the manager.
Okay. Anything further, Commissioner Reynolds?
Not particularly, but I did have one more question I was going to ask. So according to this list of things that we are giving fee relief for, it would put, like, NMU Homecoming Parade having to pay the annual of 330? Because it's not on this list, but here, I guess I'm asking, I think.
It would apply for, it's my understanding it would apply for any event, but as we discussed earlier, these events can apply for fee relief as well.
I was just trying to think of an example that, in my head. Okay, nothing further.
Any other commissioner, is there any make a comment on this? Commissioner Campana?
In regards to fee relief, so if we had this, if you have an established fee of 660, someone can come in and say, I want fee relief. Is that right? So why have it? You know, I mean, if everybody knows that, if I was putting on an event, and I knew that I could get fee relief, that's the first thing I'd ask for.
But that's not the only fee that they would have to request be relieved. There are other, for instance, if it's a fee that includes streets, there may be public works expenses for putting up barricades, there may be-
In addition to this?
Police, yes, in addition, there may be police costs for, for things. There may be-
Typically, what happens with these, these events are, the first thing, for example, in Matson Park, the first thing that you have to sit down with as staff is look at the infrastructure support they need. So what kind of power, what kind of water, what kind of sewer, how they're, how they're going to propose doing that with the existing facilities, and then what other facilities they might need for, if it's porta-potties, or if it's special staging, or if it's things like that. So you sit down, take a look at their plan, make sure you understand the basic costs of putting the event on. And then you have to go out, obviously, and inspect that. So make sure their electrical connections aren't right next to propane gas lines and things like that. The other things they have to manage are the, kind of park-like things. So if there's, if it's an exclusive event where you've got barriers that have to be set up, and people are charging a fee versus being open to the public, they'll come in and they'll ask to use all of that, all of those boundary markers, whether it's orange fences, or whether it's barricades, or whether it's some other kind of a structure. When you get beyond that, then there's the crowd control issues. So you've got security and its coordination between the event security and the police department. If it's a large event like a parade, then you could be closing off streets, and you have some additional public works, infrastructure, and things like that. So there's a lot of the choreography of these events beyond the actual event itself that falls exclusively on the city to make sure that the facilities are available, that they're safe, that they meet the expectations of the event coordinators, and that they comply with all the rules and regulations, and that they can be managed effectively.
Who pays for that?
The city does. And so every, so these fees are what are being proposed. You know, for example, on page 24, the community event fees are designed to recover the costs of the engineering staff that actually has to sit down and make sure that the utilities that they need are there, and that they meet code, that the, whether it's electrical, or water, sewer, that there's, for what they're proposing to do, sometimes they come in and they drive stakes into the ground, so you have to get- So you have to get misdig out to make sure that if you're putting up a tent, you're not putting a tent stake through a particular set of the subsurface infrastructure. And all those costs are borne by the city. They're not borne by the event. And the fees that get charged for these promotional expenses that do get waived only cover part of the time and part of the cost of the city to take on all this work. So what you're seeing on page 24 was, for the first time, a charge that was actually being assessed to all the back office kind of expenses, not the things that you see most immediately with police and fire and DPW.
But if they do come in and ask for a waiver, more than likely, they'll get it waived.
That depends on the commission. That's called by-
Commission, yeah, okay. They usually do it, so it seems.
Well, if they come in, we put every waiver request in front of the commission. That's our only role, is to be the interlocutor for that. We go back and do the qualifications to see if it's not inconsistent with some other commission policy or law, then they come in and ask you.
Yeah. It just seems that when a group wants something done, I mean, you know, they're asking a lot and, you know, is 660 really too much? I know that's a hard question. I mean, does it discourage them? I would hope not, because the other part of it is Marquette's known for having a lot of events. And if you don't have the events, maybe the events will go elsewhere, and you don't want that to happen. So it's, for me, it's hard to, you know, where's the cutoff line, you know? At what point do you encourage or discourage? So I'm having a hard time with that.
I completely understand. Let me explain from my perspective. The commission, the charter is pretty clear. I have to provide a budget that shows how all these costs are allocated across all the different departments and how we're recovering those costs. I can't present to you a budget that runs in deficit, where I'm planning on just giving away services without our ability to pay for them. And it's my job to tell you what they cost, what the fees would need to be, and be sensitive to exactly the challenge that I'm presenting to the commission. Every one of these cost trade-offs, every one of these revenues is a trade between that $7,000 that we didn't spend on additional senior meals and the $7,000 that that group should have paid to cover all the expenses that the city has in supporting the activity they want to have onboard. To Commissioner Coin's point, every one of these is a trade. And so whether we lower the fees here and then charge fines higher here, whether we don't charge for these kind of services here, but charge more for something over here, that's a policy decision that I'm charged to help inform, but that's ultimately one that you, as the representatives of the community, should be telling me how to make it. And to the extent that will this discourage people from having events, there's no data to support that view, particularly since we know that you can waive the fees at any time per the promotional process. So whether you include it as a fee upfront and then take that action later on, or whether you don't include it as a fee upfront and charge us then to go out and make that revenue trade and come back with suggestions on the 25th, we're prepared to support that either way.
Commissioner Ryan?
Gary, what's our general fund revenues from taxes, property taxes?
On page 39, we're budgeting just over 9.5 million for real property tax and what used to be known as personal property tax, approximately 596,000. So that's a total of just over $10 million for the two.
You know, for me, and following up on Dave's questions, it comes down to, you know, as a city, we're given $10 million to work with to run the city. And then we supplement that with revenue sharing and with fees and with all the rest of it. You know, we could conceivably charge a fee every time a snowplow went by your house, or, you know, charge a fee every time the city provides any service. So this debate becomes, for what do we charge extra fees? As far as I'm concerned. Now, I think if it's something that involves a service for one person, that's one thing. But, you know, these particular fees, who benefits? Is it just the organization that's putting it on? I don't think so. Otherwise, they wouldn't do it because no one would show up to watch their parade or to attend their event. I mean, these are events in the community. And to charge the group that's putting on the event, to me, just is counterproductive to what we want to create here as a community. So we, you know, we have funds to work with. And it's a matter of what do we charge extra for? Because everything you do has a charge related to it. But we do decide, in some cases, to charge people a fee. And I'm saying, in this case, I think it's a community event. I'm not in favor of charging them the fee.
I have one, just a quick question, I guess, clarification. The, I guess it would be the new page 41, the, and I appreciate you relisting the fee relief from FY14 to FY15. The FY15 column, that is generated from the requests by groups to relieve the fees, and I suppose the decisions are made to fit it into the target, basic target of about 41,000 some dollars. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. There is a process that's run by the community services department, and they get a lot of requests for fee relief. And as Bill mentioned a little earlier, there is a process that they use as to who qualifies and what exactly qualifies. And this is the list out of all the submissions that they've had that, you know, they believe qualifies. And if somebody is, you know, deemed to not qualify, they can still come to the city commission and present their case, and the city commission, you know, can, if they so choose, decide to provide fee relief. But just to make the process fair, we do have a set of rules and procedures that city staff uses to come up with this list.
So in a sense, what these fees would do is it would automatically increase the amount that each of these groups is asking for relief of, and would temper the amount of relief they actually receive.
I wouldn't necessarily say temper. I think it would definitely be a kind of a de minimis transaction, because for those groups, they'd ask for 100% relief, and I'm fairly confident the commission would probably grant 100% relief.
Well, if you, but you, then you would have to have a target of 50,000 to, instead of 41,000. Well, because the fee relief here is roughly 9,000 for the annual events, so that would be, and I would assume that you'd probably use the same amount that you used last year because you don't know what you can do.
That would be part of what we would go back and work through.
And that would be close. I just want to point out, too, sometimes not every event uses their full fee relief, so we wouldn't necessarily have to add, you know, $330 or whatever it was to every existing event, because some it's overestimated because, you know, the intent is to recover, provide full fee relief, but in order to get a number in, we just have to estimate what that number would be.
Anything further from commissioners? Should I ask for the vote on the motion? It's been moved by Commissioner Stonehouse, seconded by Commissioner Reynolds, to eliminate the community event new and community event annual on page 24. All commissioners in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any commissioners opposed, say no.
No.
I would say yes. So it's two. Commissioner Coin?
Could I make another motion to supplement that? And that is to direct the city manager and his staff to come up with alternative ways of funding that decrease. That's not in the motion.
Well, that would be implicit in the action, I think, but-
Well, I'm going to make that motion. I don't view it as implicit. That's why I voted against it.
Okay.
Your Honor, could I ask clarification? Commissioner, are you directing us to take a specific action? We have to provide you with a balanced budget. So part of the revenue now, the $17,000 that's not collected from those fees, we'll have to identify and be prepared to speak to on the 25th, unless the commission is going to give us some specific direction on where to find the money. Is that what your request was?
Then, hearing that, I won't make that motion.
The motion is approved, two, four, five to one.
Although I will add, it would be nice if you would tell us where that money is going to come from.
Take it out of the revenue sharing we're going to get.
So we haven't budgeted any statutory revenue sharing? Is that what you want us to do?
That's just my comment.
Commissioner Coin?
Well, along that line, can you provide us with your suggestion prior to the public hearing? Although we won't vote on the public hearing, but to me, it doesn't make any sense then to get into this discussion again. We have to hear what you're going to do, so.
Yeah. I don't know, I'll just throw it out. I will just budget that amount in statutory revenue sharing. We're pretty much guaranteed we're at least going to get that amount.
$17,000?
So that's a pretty safe bet, but I'm just throwing it out there. The tradition has been over the past three years to not budget any statutory revenue sharing, but it's there if that's what you so choose.
Or it could come out of Susan, 340,000.
Yeah, and, I mean, that could become an issue, too. We might have to come back and say, I was wrong, and it's not going to work that way.
City manager?
All right. We definitely will figure this one out, and we'll send you our suggestions before the public hearing.
Thank you.
Sufficiency, Commissioner Coin?
Let me open another squirrel's cage, then. I'm looking at site plan review, and I'm on page 20. And perhaps I'm misreading it or I'm not understanding it, but I have no problem with the increase of the costs of site plan review for the commercial operations, commercial, industrial, three or more rental units, et cetera. But I'm wondering how that applies to an individual property owner that might be choosing to change or modify a garage on his property and would have to bring that through a site plan review process. I mean, as a homeowner, I think that's a huge amount of money for what would be essentially a project that could cost as much as he's paying in fees. So would it be reasonable to look at that in that fashion, or am I missing something?
As far as PUD, a homeowner would have a PUD.
Well, no, it says, site plan reviews, zoning, appliance fees, commercial, industrial, residential, three or more units, and final PUD site plan.
So that would be for an apartment complex with three or more units. It wouldn't be for a regular homeowner.
So what does a regular homeowner pay?
Well, that's the columns above it. The remodeling, the additions, alterations, or accessories, you can see, depending on if it's paved or not.
Okay, okay. Then I have misread. Thank you.
Although, on that point, we are increasing fees by 200, 300, 400, 500 percent.
I can, you know, I can see the need for increasing those fees. I would wonder if there was a way for us to base those fees on the ability to pay versus, like, for instance, we had the Ben Breakfast come in as a PUD rather than a whatever you want, because they could do things that they couldn't do otherwise, because, I think, rezoning or something. And, or if you have a founders land or a liberty way project, that is huge. And I don't know, I guess maybe I'm spitting in the wind here, but-
I guess there'd be really no way. How would we assess their ability to pay? I mean, that would create even more of a cost burden. If you take a look at the, you know, the fee and then the break-even fee on the page, the rightmost column, that's actually what it costs us to process those kind of requests. And you can see the fees that, at least on one, up to 500 feet, which would probably cover the garage, is substantially less than what it actually costs us to process those. So we're already a point where we're either at break-even or slightly below for the majority of things that we've got there. If we had to assess people's ability to pay, it would jack up the cost of-
It would be people's ability to pay, the project would, by the value of the project, would be the defining, you know, element, whether you can, you have the ability to pay or not. But I understand what you're saying. I, you know, when you look at the actual cost, that must be an average cost, because a site plan of three sheets is much simpler to review than a site plan of 40 sheets.
Yeah. It's actually average costs plus comparables in the area, like you heard Director Stack would share.
Commissioner?
Yeah, I'm just curious if there's any other communities that do it by the basis of the size of the project? In other words, the site plan review is tied directly to the value of the project as opposed to simply being a one-size-fits-all? That would, on at least surface, seem to make a lot more sense.
Seems like when Dennis was presenting this, he was talking about how the Sioux does it, and seems like they have a base fee plus add-ons for size and other kind of things. I don't remember exactly, but-
Yeah, this was the discussion where it was base fee plus percent. There was a question about, you know, could we just charge actuals and say, okay, we'll just start, we'll just start tracking folks' time instead of setting an average fee like this? If it takes three hours of staff time, they get charged for three hours of staff time. The challenge for the developers is they, until they're complete, they don't really know what the cost is going to be.
Mm-hmm.
So from that standpoint, there are a few different ways to skin this cat. If you'd like us to be prepared to come back and do that on the 25th, we'll be glad to do that.
So this is seen to be, then, more developer-friendly? Is that what I'm getting from it?
This doesn't really change any of the requirements for permitting. This just changes our ability to recover costs against-
Well, what I meant was the ability of a developer to know what the cost would be going in as opposed to-
Yeah, this is a fixed fee. That's it. Everything that you need is included in that fee. And that's what Director Stackowitz was saying, is until the projects, until the projects completed, the action associated with that fee is completed, it's just one fee.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
Just so I understand it now, you know, there's a administrative review and a planning commission review. So you'd have to pay both of those fees on a project?
It depends on whether the project includes a planning commission review or not, or if it's something that administratively can be approved.
Is that for a special meeting, the planning commission, the planning commission review, or?
I'll have to ask Director Stackowitz to clarify that.
Commissioner Coin?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, Mr. Stackowitz isn't here, but here's a question. Say I'm a dentist, and I want to open a dental office in the city, and I also am thinking of opening it in Marquette Township or Chocley Township. Are these costs similar, higher, lower, equivalent, what? Because that is a factor in me as a dentist, aside, I'm not coming to Marquette because those fees are obtrusive, or this is a great deal, or it's equivalent. Do you know the answer to that?
Not right now, sir. We'll have to follow up.
I think that's a key issue in terms of being, quote, "business friendly." It's the same as the Rotary Club wanting to have another event and charging them $650 or $1,200. That's not friendly. And we can't be unfriendly fee-wise. We may have to eat some of it. I only raise that because somebody asked me that yesterday, and I have no idea whether the fees are different.
I understand, sir. We're going to have to follow up. I don't have that off the top of my head today.
Well, I guess I have an issue. I brought it up when we were looking at the promotional, the cut of the city band from 7,000 to 5,000. I guess I would like to see the $2,000 restored. We didn't cut the Superior Watership Partnership. We didn't cut the Beautification Committee. I guess I don't know why the city banned it. And to Commissioner Ryan's concern, they're not a marching band, they're a band. That's why they're not in the parade. They're not a drum and bugle corps either. Yeah. But they are involved in the community. They have free concerts that they give. They, they have free concerts that they, they give. I'd rather them- Stonehouse?
I would be happy to motion to increase the city band's stipend from $5,000 to $7,000.
Is there a second? Commissioner Reynolds, thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse, anything further?
Well, only that. I, I think they really do great work for the city. I think they've been certainly getting bigger and better in the last couple of years. I think they've got a great vision for the future. I think evidenced by the concerts they've been putting on this summer and rolling into the fall. They clearly have new life and new vigor, and I'm, I'm very willing to support that with a relatively small amount of money. Thank you.
Commissioner Reynolds, anything further?
No, nothing further.
Any other commissioners, anything further?
It just, it just seems they got along with $5,000 for years, and then we upped it to $2,000, and I think they just got a big grant to set, by $2,000, to $7,000 or something. I think they just got a big grant.
Although, we don't adjust Superior Watership contribution when they get, when, when we get big grants from them either, so, yeah.
I'm not sure how it got from five to two, but, or from five to seven.
I don't know. But I guess we, I, I certainly would support it. Any other comments? I'll call a question. It's been moved by Commissioner Stonehouse, seconded by Commissioner Reynolds, to restore the city band to $7,000. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no. The motion is passing instantly. Thank you. Anything else that we want to?
I guess you're assuming you won't staff to balance this out.
A little more revenue sharing.
Or maybe you should, maybe you should email Susan.
Yeah, you guys are starting to make me sweat over here.
Well, that's $19,000, our, yes, Commissioner Coin?
Well, I would like to just kind of point out, it's your job and your judgment to make these recommendations. And, and you've done a good job, and you had good reasons for doing it. Our job is to, to what we've just done. We're representing the citizens, and that does not in any way impain, mean to diminish your decisions at all. It's just, I mean, we're representing the citizens, and if we say we'd like to add $2,000 more, blah, 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 that's our job, and it doesn't mean that we're picking on you. It's just that you've got to live with that, and then you have to come up with a different way of funding and balancing the budget, so.
No, and please don't take my comments to feel like we're being picked on. We fully realize it goes from the city manager's budget to the city commission budget, and it is your budget, so you're allowed to make changes as you want. It's just, makes it a little more challenging, particularly in the environment we're in now, to try to balance things, but we will come up with a plan and present it to you.
Well, you, the reason we are voting to do these things is we have great confidence in your ability to do that.
Thank you.
Because of what you've done with the challenge, and I'm sure you can come up with $17,000.
$19,000.
Excuse me, not 20.
City manager?
Thank you, Your Honor, yeah, absolutely. We understand our role and your role. We appreciate, we appreciate all the guidance we've gotten. We'll be prepared when we come back on the 25th to clarify whatever we haven't been able to clarify in the interim. And I appreciate your confidence in CFO Simpson. I, I have the same confidence. I like to see him sweat, so it's a good thing. A good thing that you're giving him something to do, at least until the 25th, to keep his, his copious free time available. But we'll look forward to it. Our role isn't always the happy one. Our job is fundamentally enforcement, to, to be the ones who have to take the hard line with the money to make sure that, that we're not putting the commission or the city in a position to either overcommit or to, to enter into some kind of a fragile, long-term, unsustainable program for the city. We know we'll be able to, to manage all of the things you've suggested today, and let's hope that we aren't like the Lions when it comes to the Super Bowl. As the revenue, as the revenue firms up, hopefully, you'll see towards the end of the year, we'll be able to look back and, and be very glad for all the great things that we'll be able to accomplish this year.
Commissioner Ryan?
Well, just, we, we kind of suddenly left the planning fees and, and I'm not suggesting, I'm not going to present anything. I think I'd like to get the information that Commissioner Coin asked about. But, but it does concern me, you know, you know, if you get into a review and another review, and, you know, if somebody starts saying $3,000, $4,000, $5,000 in fees, and these are people who want to invest in the community, you know, I, I just don't want to send a negative message to those people. And they're a fairly small group of people that are willing to take that bull by the horns and make things happen.
Yeah. Your Honor, if I could, we'll be glad to, but, you know, of course, it's an apple-to-orange comparison. They don't have the services, they don't have the infrastructure, they don't have the same kind of constraints that we do when we're plugging, plugging into an already existing system. It's certainly going to be a lot easier to conduct a site plan review when there's no water service and no sanitary sewer service and no stormwater service. And so you won't have to assess those impacts, and equally so when there's no police service or fire service or, or routine snow plowing. And so we'll be glad to, we'll be glad to show those comparables, we'll have that back as quickly as we can. But again, it's not for a comparable community. The townships are fundamentally different than the cities. They fundamentally don't have the same amenities, and I think there's a large part of decision-making from small businesses that take that into account as well.
That's a very, that's a very good point, and I think it's certainly something we have to, to factor into the equation. Anything further?
Only my thanks for, only my thanks for all the work that's been done on it. When you think of the, the size of the budget, it really is quite remarkable, I think, that we've been able to work through it as smoothly and easily as we've been able to in the last four sessions or so. And I can speak from a little bit of history, and this is the sixth year we've, we've gone through the budget process. Every year gets a little bit tighter, a little bit smoother, a little bit more focused, a little bit more manageable. And that continuous improvement, I think, is very, really tremendous accolade to not only the city manager, but also to the staff that has been able to really make him look good. So, thank you.
The other commissioners?
I guess I'd kind of like to echo what Commissioner Stonehouse said. I think I've stated this before, when, when looking at the challenges we have with the tax tribunal cases, the, the potential of, of a disruption with the hospital, the, the power plant, you know, I've always said we've had easy budget process the last six years, and in fact, it was outstanding that during the, the height of the recession, we still had easy budget process. And I thought that this year, we were going to have much more challenges. Staff, you know, paved the way for us and took, and relieved us of those challenges, those heavy lifts, and, and I thank you for that. So it, it's been frankly amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Nothing further? We're adjourned.